First of all, I want to thank you all for coming. Pastor Rick, if you'll step forward, I'm going to ask Pastor Rick to lead us in prayer. Justice, courts, we may as well stand because we're also going to say the Pledge of Allegiance. How does it sound? It's a trouble, what do you think? All right, let's pray. Father, we never want to forget to be thankful for this nation that you've given us, for the liberty we enjoy, the sacrifices that were made to hand it to us. And tonight, we are participating in part of that responsibility as our stewardship for preserving that liberty. We thank you for the privilege and pray that you can help us to have clarity tonight, and understanding, and wisdom, so that we can be the kind of people that will pass to our children and our grandchildren, a country they can be proud of and that will preserve the liberties you've given us, in Jesus' name. Amen. I'm going to ask Randy Cash to step forward. Randy is the VFW commander, post commander, for 7721. Did I get that right?
You got it right. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance is to the God of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Somebody say "play ball." Okay, we have some candidates besides the school board candidates in the room, and I hope I got them all, but I want to just have them stand up. Running for your judge, County Judge Group Two, Michael Beeman, Beeman? In the back. Stephen Jaren running for County Commissioner District Four, in the back. Brad Schiffer running for County Commission District Two, in the back. We have Don Berry running for Clerk of Courts. And his competitor, Crystal Kinsel, will be here. She's at another event, will be here shortly, so... Okay, did I miss it? Oh, I have one other candidate who's running for Florida House District 106, Sarah McFadden. Did I miss anybody? That's good. I'd like to just spend a couple of minutes on who we are. I think most of you probably know who Florida Citizens Alliance is. You have a trifold on your table. We focus exclusively on K through 12 education, and I would hope that we get a show of hands in this, how we want a better education for our kids. So, that's our mission. Our vision is to unleash the individual potential, burden potential, of each and every child. That's our goal. I also have on your table, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time with it, but I'm going to add, we may put three or four copies up, so you may have to share it. It's a printed sheet with some yellow on it. And there are two opposing views here about how our schools are doing. And I'd like to share really the two views, so you understand. On your desk is, your table is, Collier County High School. And on the left-hand side of the vertical bar, you see the scores, reading and math proficiency scores and college readiness, based on nationally normed test results. Everybody know what a nationally normed test is? Anybody who doesn't? It's like an ACT, SAT, and EAP. So, it's tests that are taken across the country by all the students in all the states. On the right-hand side of the bar is our Florida grading system. What you also see in red is, based, we do this every year, based on last year, five of our school districts, five of our high schools are down. But I wanted to draw your attention to the bottom of this chart. If you look at the bottom yellow, you'll see there, and most people would accept that Massachusetts is leading the nation in terms of reading and math proficiencies. And you see number one and number 20, all top 20 are in that range, and their reading and math proficiencies are 100 percent, very close to it. Now, you can look right above it, to the yellow just above it, and you see the top four schools from a national perspective in Florida. And they range from 199 all the way down, just, these are now the best rated, the best schools on nationally normed test results in Florida. And you see a significant decline relative to the national best. And above that now, for Collier County, for each high school, you see the high school reading and math proficiencies based on nationally normed test results. Now, on the right-hand side of this chart, you'll see how the Florida grading system works. And I'm not going to go into a great deal of detail, but let it suffice that we grade ourselves in Florida on a curve. And to get an A, 62% are better on eight different factors that are in the formula, reading, math, science proficiency, et cetera. To get a D, it's 32%. To get a D, it's 32%. 62 is an A. Now, when, many of you are a lot younger than I am, but when most of us went to school, anything below a 75 was, needs a lot of improvement, right? So, the point of this chart is our schools always need improvement, and we urge folks to understand that you ought to be looking at nationally normed test results, because that's the world our kids are going to have to go compete in. Okay? I'm going to stop there. I don't want to make this all about us, but I believe you have that as an expectation. Let me explain the format for the debate tonight. We have three candidates for District Five and two candidates for District Two. It is going to be a debate. Each candidate will get two minutes to tell you who they are and why they're running, et cetera. So, they're in reduction. And then, we have two moderators, and I'll introduce them in a minute, but they'll ask a question. And each candidate, each district, will get a chance to answer that question. And then, if they choose to, and they don't have to do this, but if they choose to differentiate themselves from their competitor, because they're obviously competing for District Three, or District Five, they'll get a chance to challenge each other. If any candidate challenges another candidate, then they'll get a chance, that candidate's challenged will get a chance to respond. Everybody clear on that? Okay? On your table are three-by-five cards. We have two student interns that are here tonight. I want to introduce them both. Standing right in the back of the room is Dominique Clemens. She's a sophomore, just finished her sophomore year at Hillsdale College. The guy all dressed up in a suit over here, Ryan Kennedy, is FGCU student, and he's involved in a lot of different activities, but is currently the member, the president of the FGCU Republican Club on campus. Okay, I'm now, I'm going to now just very quickly introduce the moderators, and then we're going to get started. Doug, I see you made it. Doug called me today, and he was racing down from Jacksonville and stuck in traffic, so I'm glad you made it here safely. Doug Lewis is a local attorney, co-founder of the Thompson Lewis Law Firm, and a public school and education activist. The Thompson Law Firm is regionally ranked by U.S. News and Report, World Report, in the 2018 Best Law Firms for its real estate law and real estate litigation practices area. In the 2016 cycle, Doug was extremely helpful to Florida Citizens Alliance in drafting the bill that Byron Dawkins actually, and Senator Lee got passed and signed by the governor on instructional materials. We couldn't have done that without Doug. Doug is a former chair of the local real estate section of the local Collier County Board, a Bar Association, chair of the local Brigham Young University Alumni Association, and volunteer as a scout master for BSA Troop 52. Often, when I'm trying to get ahold of Doug, he's out with his scouts. Pastor Rick Stevens is from Cape Coral. Pastor Rick is pastor of the Diplomat Westland Church in Cape Coral. During his 42 years of parish ministry, he has served churches in the United States and Canada. About half of that time, he concentrated on this interesting, music and youth ministries, and recently completed 20 years in his ministry in Cape Coral. In addition to academic studies, equal oriented coordination, he completed a Bachelor of Music Education, a Master of Music, and a Master of Organizational Leadership. His community involvement involves around the historic example of John Wesley and the Methodist pastors serving their neighborhood. So, welcome both of our moderators. You're welcome to, welcome them both. We're going to get going. Last comment I'm going to make is that about a quarter, it's going to go for about an hour, and then in about a quarter to seven, we're going to, our ushers will hand out, we'll stop for just two or three minutes, they'll hand out, just real quick. Straw ballots, thank you. We'll hand out straw ballots. We're going to ask you not to fill those out until after the candidates have completed their clothes, and then you're going to return them to the students who will tally them. Okay? Any questions on format or where we're headed? Okay, with that, I'm going to turn it over to our two moderators. Thank you. Well, I should have added one thing to his description of me. Last year, I was a referee for our youth football program. So, I guess that's okay for moderating a debate. You can have a good referee, but I didn't bring my yellow flag, so I guess we'll be all right. Couple of things from our perspective, as Mr. Lewis and I have talked, our role as moderators is to really help the candidates communicate their positions and to help you, the audience, understand what they're about. We want to know where they stand on important issues and what the residents of Collier County can expect if they're elected to the school board. So, we'll try to, we'll try to facilitate that as best we can, and we certainly do want to reemphasize our eagerness and interest in having your questions, so feel free to submit those. We're glad to have them as we go along. Now, this is a debate format, so we expect a conversation. We want the candidates to engage in that conversation. We want them to engage each other, to clarify their positions, to take advantage of the rebuttal opportunities and all those kinds of things. Also, because it's a debate, we as moderators reserve our discretion to interject and ask for clarification or push back a little bit on something if additional information is needed. We certainly don't want to get in the way, but we want to let you know that we're not shy about speaking up if something needs to be clarified. We also want to recognize that Mr. Terry is an incumbent and has a record to defend. We want to give him that opportunity to clarify his positions as an incumbent. The others are not incumbents, and so they can only tell us what they plan to do, along with Mr. Terry, and what he would plan to do if reelected. We just think that's important for everybody to understand that both sides of those things. Also, Mr. Terry is the only sitting school board member, so we don't anticipate any sunshine law violations, if some of you are concerned about that. If there is a sitting school board member in the audience, though, we ask that you not engage with Mr. Terry, because that would put us at risk relative to the sunshine law. Also, my co-moderator is a plaintiff in litigation that involves the district, and so none of the questions that we will be offering will touch on that litigation at all, and we will stay away from that. So, with all of that hopefully clarified, we're ready to go. I think the candidates are going to have an opportunity to introduce themselves, so I guess we should start from left to right. We can start the other way, but we'll let Jen begin and just follow down in the road. If you take your two minutes to introduce yourselves, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, thank you for coming. Thank you to our hosts and our moderators this evening. My name is Jen Mitchell. I'm a local Realtor and mother of four Collier County Public School students. Two of them recently graduated, two are still in our schools here. I've lived in Naples for 21 years, but I was born and raised in Lockheed, Indiana, where I graduated from Purdue University with my degree in elementary education. It's also where I met my husband, and together we moved back here to his hometown to start our life together, and I was fortunate to get a job teaching at Naples Park Elementary. I spent a year there before we welcomed our first child, and I became a stay-at-home mom. That allowed me to spend the past 15 years volunteering in my children's classrooms, serving on their school PTO board, school advisory councils, participating at the district level in the superintendent's district advisory council, as well as in the Champions for Learning Connect Now project, which was a series of workshops that laid the groundwork for what later became the strategic plan of the district. Fast forward to almost four years ago, I decided to go back to work, and I became a Realtor, and I learned very quickly the role that our schools played in the local economy. Oftentimes, the first question I'm asked by my buyers who are new to the area is, "Tell me about your schools." So, they understand that the quality of education that we offer here in Collier County directly impacts their property values. I'm running because I do truly believe in the mission and the vision of Collier County Public Schools. I think we've made excellent progress under the leadership of our current superintendent in the last seven years. Lots of, lots of gains have been made, increasing graduation rate by 16 percentage points. We now rank fifth in academic achievement in the state. We were 33rd seven years ago. We have the NAF Academy, such as specialty areas of study, in all of the high schools, robotics labs in the middle schools, the Cambridge ACE Program for our high achieving students at every elementary, middle, and high school. So, a lot to be proud of, but there's still work to be done. It's my hope that we will elect a board that is willing to work together to turn the focus back to increasing student achievement, increasing parent involvement, attracting and retaining great teachers, continued financial stewardship of taxpayer dollars, and school safety becoming a more comprehensive approach in terms of addressing the mental health and the social emotional learning of our students as well. So, I hope I can count on your vote August 28th, and I look forward to answering your questions this evening.
Good evening. Thank you to the hosts for putting this on, and thank you to all of you who showed up for giving up your evenings, and to those of you who like baseball, the Home Run Derby starts at eight, I think. I'm Dr. Kathy Ryan. I came here 48 years ago. I came from Michigan. I got my bachelor's degree and master's degree from Michigan State University. I originally went to work at Amocley Middle School as a counselor, and I moved over to the high school and taught remedial math, remedial reading. I was helping the kids who failed the test and got them to, through, to pass the test. And I moved over, did social studies, and I had one year as a curriculum dean, and then the last two years of my 30 years with the district, I spent at the district office being in charge of summer school. In that job, I had to supervise a $3 million budget, which back then was a lot more money. As many of you know, our district has an approximately billion-dollar budget. How we get that money, how we divvy up that money is a very important procedure, and knowing all of that in terms of being a board member is very important. So, I've had some experience with the budgetary process. In getting my doctorate from Florida Atlantic University, I had to study Florida school law and Florida school finance, which again gave me insight into how all of that works. On a personal level, I was never able to have children on my own, but I like to say that I raised several thousand of other people's children, and I still care very deeply about their children and grandchildren, and I want to see them have their very best education possible. If you did not receive one of my leaflets with all of my experience and some statements on them, they're on the back table. Stop by and get one. Otherwise, I will be anxious to field the questions and see where we go from there. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank the Florida Citizens Alliance for putting on and hosting tonight's forum. Most importantly, I want to thank all of you that I'm sure have 99 other things to do than come to the forum. However, I am very proud of Collier County for all of you to be here and take invested interest in your future school board. So, many of you know that my name is Darlene Alvarez. If you remember one thing about me, I want you to know that I'm a mom. I've had four children in the Collier County schools. My oldest is now a U.S. Navy diver in California, and my youngest is at the back table who's in middle school. A little bit more about me, I earned my master's degree from University of Maryland, which I understand, so do my fellow candidates. Beyond that, I'm a business professional. I'm an HR certified professional in Collier County. I serve on Collier County's SHRM boards, and I also work for the HR Collier as well. What that means as an HR professional, I too have to earn 60 credit hours, just like our CPAs in the area. My focus is on employees, their benefits, and I want employees to come to work with their hearts, not their feet, which is where I feel is the vested interest of our teachers. Beyond that, I'm a business professional. I work for Paychecks, the payroll company here in Naples. Of those you have heard of Tom Galasano, yes, it's Tom Galasano's company. Every day, I hear the concerns from business owners who say they have a hard time recruiting, maintaining, and finding qualified candidates to come to our work. We need students who do not wish to go into college to come out, they're career-ready and want to go ahead and work the Monday after they graduate for our local school businesses. My focus is a greater focus on vocational schools, as well as those students who do want to go on to college. I'm here to ask you for a job, a very important job. As a member of the school board, those of you who elect will make school board decisions for our students. These decisions in many ways are going to affect those students entering the workforce. Those that you elect have the responsibility to ensure that our students are given every opportunity to succeed and move on and become a viable member of our society. Again, my name is Darlene Alvarez. I'm running for school board, and I look for your vote on August 28th. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Cash. I have been a teacher here in Collier for 17 years, counselor, program developer. I earned a master's in education and counseling from the University of Central Florida, which I got a long time ago in 1986, and a bachelor of science, excuse me, a bachelor of science and business from the University of Maryland, which I got in 1979. It seems like a long time ago now, but the experience comes after, right? So, for 25 years, I was an educator. Despite the fact that as a military wife for 24 years, you move with, with your husband, and then you move schools. So, I worked for Department of Defense Schools. I worked for Muskogee County, Georgia. I worked for New Orleans Parish Schools, where I was the only person perceived white in a all-black inner-city school. And really, that's where I learned about generational poverty, something that really affects our children in Amocley. My national certifications are in counseling, English as a second language, and Spanish. I put copies of our fact sheet on your tables, and we also have them in the back if you need them, so you can get a better idea of our civic responsibilities, our organizations that we're involved with in the community. My husband and I have been active for years in supporting not just schools, but for example, we have the aviation program at the airport now that supports the Lalee Academy in Aviation, where the students can actually go to ground school and then get their pilot's license if they qualify before they leave high school. So, that's a new program that we just started this year in collaboration with the NAACP. I have extensive experience with the College Reach Out Program. I am a founding member with the College Reach Out Program in FGCU, and as a result of that involvement with the community, we really feel like we need to keep working, mentoring, helping, and programming, so that the students can keep achieving. Also, I wanted you to know that serving on the Collier County School Board, I don't see as a political career. I see it as a civic responsibility. I do not support continued property tax increases for education. We must look internally for better fiscal efficiencies, planning, and inventory control. Accountability programming to facilitate average yearly progress is the way I would approach curriculum development. And I want to increase communication between the school board and the community. I want to involve stakeholders. Our curriculum must be fact-based, not opinion-based. Once again, if you need any more information, go to our website, www.cashforddistrict5.com. That's where I think we show our best, our best explanation of what we like, what we do, what are, what we want to do in Collier County Public Schools. And I appreciate your vote on August 28th. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Roy Terry. My wife and I moved to Collier County in 1978. Prior to that time, I started out teaching in high school in both Baltimore, Maryland, and also in Sarasota, Florida, where I was a coach and a teacher at both of those locations. At that time, I went back to school in Colorado State and spent the next 12 years as a teacher and a coach on the college level at Colorado State University, University of Louisville, Moorehead State in Kentucky, and also California, Pennsylvania, where I was the athletic director. We moved down here in '78 with our two children, who graduated from Naples High School. I was a teacher and a coach and an athletic director at Naples High School, and went to East Naples Middle School, where I was an assistant principal for one year, and then went to the district office, where I worked as a coordinator at the district office for three years. Then left there, went to Lalee High School, where I was assistant principal for curriculum, and then moved into the principal's job in 1996. I was principal at Lalee High School until 2003. At that time, I took a year to help design and develop, pick all the teachers and all the colors, and sell all the traditions for Plomet Ridge High School out in the north part of the county, and was there until 2009, when I retired from that and then ran for the school board. I was appointed for one year by the governor to fulfill a term that I was running at that time, and I've won two consecutive terms on the school board here in Collier County. I'm presently the board chair, and have been the board chair for the past two years. Served one other time earlier as the board chair, so I've served three years as the board chair in that position. I think I'm very proud of where we are in Collier County, and I hope to explain that to you as we go along. I see my time is up, and I thank you for coming this evening.
All right, thank you, candidates. Now, we'll get to some questions, just so there's no misunderstanding. All questions tonight are selected by the moderators from the questions you submitted on our own. No one influences our choice, so we get either the credit or the, well, you can fill in the blanks. We're going to begin tonight with Mr. Lewis asking the first question.
Very good, thank you, Pastor Rick. We'll start with Kathy Ryan. It's a follow-up, it's a fiscal-related question. In your opening, you had mentioned the size of the budget. You had mentioned that it's grown to over $2 trillion in the, we're talking now about the 2017, 2018 budget. Based on that, and your concern about the budget, or your interest in the budget as a candidate, do you support zero-based budgeting where expenses and return on investment are justified annually? And as an ancillary question for discussion, you can start with the answer, then any other candidates can weigh in. There is a question from the audience, and the question from the audience reads, "Collier's budget, $22,350 per student, least budget, $16,900 per student. Are we getting our money's worth?" Question mark, source, both Collier County School Districts, both county school districts' websites. So, that's the question from the audience. I'll leave it there. Ms. Ryan?
Okay, that's, the budget in itself is a very complicated thing, and how we get the money, where it's coming from, all of that, trying to digest that and respond to it in a minute or so is extremely difficult. So, trying to get all of, digest all of that quickly is, first of all, for those of you who are aware or unaware, the money in that budget comes from two sources. Approximately, not exactly, half the budget comes from the state and from tax, sales tax money, approximately. The other half is that property tax money that you... that you provide through your property taxes. Within that, the property tax money, for the most part, and again, I have to simplify this, is used for facilities, maintenance, and that kind of thing. The money we get from the state, also, we get an awful lot of categorical, what is called categorical funding. Does that mean I have to stop already? Sorry, I couldn't give you a more complete answer, but...
Ms. Ryan, I'll just give you a chance. Do you support zero-based budgeting?
I support having every one of the departments have to resubmit their budgets and justify them every year. I guess that would be the simplest way to respond to them.
Okay. So in terms of zero-based budgeting, I looked into this. This was a question that was brought to my attention early on in the campaign. It is wholly inefficient for a district our size when you have 57 different school buildings. There is not another district in the state of Florida that does it. So there's a reason for that. I think that our district... So in terms of zero-based budgeting, I don't think it's necessary. I do think what's necessary is that we use the risk assessment that came back as a roadmap to further audit the district. In particular, we've already, the board has already agreed to audit payroll, great, but the next big-ticket item is contract compliance, and that needs to be the next thing audited, in my opinion. When we're trying to find money for teacher salaries and those types of things, it's important that we look where the biggest expenses are. Furthermore, I think it's important that we understand as taxpayers, our district has been very fiscally responsible with your money. We currently have $220 million sitting in capital reserves. We have approximately $85 million sitting in operational reserves. $52 million of that budget, give or take, is servicing the debt. So really, you're looking at just over $600 million. And of that $600 million, there are buckets that are delineated for very specific purposes. So the $22,000 number is inaccurate. You cannot take 1.05 billion and divide it by 49,000 students to get that 22,000 number. It doesn't work that way. Very, very, the legislature's very particular about how our money and the buckets it comes from. Thank you.
So Miss Mitchell noted zero-based budgeting and risk assessment. Yes, correct. Any other candidates?
I believe we could add something. And I will make this short, but since I wound up not being able to finish the sentence that I was trying to say. Terms of the, the money we get from the state also has a lot of categorical spending. So again, as was pointed out, just dividing and coming up with a number is really fruitless because it doesn't give you a true picture. When you get X amount of money that must be spent on transportation, or you get X amount of money that must be spent on textbooks, that's what it has to be spent for, and it will be spent for that kind of information, for that kind of material. When we get the money to sharpen up our schools for security, that will be what it's going to have to be spent for. So as was pointed out, I agree. You cannot just divide the two things and come up with a number and say, "That's what's being spent for child."
Same question we want to begin with, Mr. Terry.
Same question that was asked before. Just one thing, a number of things have been brought up here, but I would like to bring up that the budget and what makes up the budget. First of all, you have operating, which is part of the budget, which is one of the main parts. And I would point out that 97.11% of the general operating budget is spent at the schools. We have debt service that is included in the budget. We have a capital budget, which is the next largest amount, which is included in the budget. We have grants, federal, state, which include nutritional services, and many grants are made for specific purposes. We also have internal service budgets of worker comp and health insurance. But a lot of these things are mandated. A lot of the money that comes to us is mandated by the state. And so you can't just take the whole budget and divide it by the number of pupils that we have in each class. So even though it's a billion-dollar budget, it's made up of a lot of different parts, and very difficult sometimes to totally explain the whole budget altogether. Thank you.
I want to address this very specifically because I'm taking the figures directly from the school board website. This is the FY '18 Section 3 Budget Summary Chart. And the general fund is 51% of the total budget. And as they stated here, the total budget is So the debt service is 5%. Capital projects is 29%. Special revenue is 4%. Nutrition services is 3%, and internal service is 8%. So depending on how you look at the budget, what we keep arguing about is that there's never enough money. I disagree. I had $461,000 when I was in the migrant program, and I learned how to budget and how to find resources without spending money in order to make that budget work. That's what we need to start doing. If that's a zero-based budget, that's what we need to do. As a board, we need to have that conversation to say, "This is 2018. We cannot keep doing things as we did it in 1994, '95, '96." I want to see the school budgets on the websites. They've stopped doing that. Every school used to publish the budget, and no longer do they do that. I'm sorry, I'm colorblind. What does that say? It's red. That means stop? Okay, so to be continued. Sorry. I am colorblind.
The quick answer is no to the zero-based budget. I would like to look more into the risk assessment. We were given, the board was given the recommendation to look at the payroll and the benefits, and this is the focus I think we need to look at as well. Coming from the payroll industry, this is why I do. I work with hundreds of companies here in Collier County to look at their budget on their point of view, and we bring in benefits and payroll administration that work best for those small companies. On a large scale, you have the same concepts in place. If the Collier County is over on the payroll administration, then that's one part to look at as far as that. As far as the benefits are concerned, this is one piece of the school budget. That's a fairly large piece to the benefits. I know that the Collier County schools is partially self-funded, meaning the school picks up a lot of the claims that come in from medical and such. I believe a first start would be to look at the benefit programs, to make them richer programs so that these students, teachers, administration feel like they have some sort of a Fortune 500 benefits. I've actually had a client that I worked with for payroll, and when I gave them their health benefits, they were comparing it to their wife's benefits as a teacher. We offered better benefits to a small business that had less than 50 employees. That's really sad. So I think that you look at different things within it. I think that the focus is at large scale and look at the different things, looking at the vendors, looking at the budget, look at the payroll, and definitely look at the benefits. Thank you.
Any rebuttals between candidates on that? Or you all talked out? You want to head now? Okay, go ahead.
I just want to add also that our district is in a position to be debt-free in the next eight years, which is almost unheard of for a district our size. And so it's my hope that, as a board member, that we continue to push for financial fiscal responsibility to the taxpayer, those types of things. And it's certainly a goal of mine, and I would hope everyone out here as well.
All right, no question. We'll start with Jen, since Kathy started the other one. Do you support parental control of a student's education?
That's a very loaded question. I think in terms of parental, just the basic choice that I made to send my kids to public school, public school was my choice. And so I am exerting that control. And when we have had issues, you know, there's a chain of command. You take it to the teacher first if you have a concern. If your concerns are not met, then it goes to the principal, and then you go outside the building. So in terms of parental control, I think it's very important, yes, that we offer choices. My concern is, if I'm reading the question correctly, that we don't offer so many choices that we create a quality control problem and that we're creating choices at the expense of those that already exist, including current charter schools and public schools here in Collier County. Because currently, there is no mechanism for a financial oversight of continued charters coming in here to Collier County, which would represent choices. And in addition to that, there could be a line out the door tomorrow. There could be 10 more charters lined up to apply for status here in Collier County, further depleting the resources that schools like Mason, Marco Island Academy, Gulf Coast High School, Lowerlooke Elementary have access to. So choices, yes, but not at the expense of schools that currently exist.
Thank you. Going forward, let me clarify. I said, "Do you support parental control?" I wasn't talking about choice in the same way, but parental control of a student's education. Ms. Ryan?
Yeah, I...
That's the question. Okay, that's fine.
I would agree. I'm not quite sure where you're going with parental control. I, it would be my belief that most parents do have control other than individually, once your child is assigned to a teacher. I'm not sure that the parent can actually control what that teacher is doing in that classroom. They certainly can go and raise objection with either the teacher or the principal or take it farther off. And that should be available. It's available now and should always be available. Again, I agree with, the choice should be there, where your child should go. We have plenty of choices here in Collier County. And I too would agree that we're still, we are not big enough with enough students to create a whole lot of more choices for the students, but I think we have plenty. And again, control, I think I would like some kind of more definite definition if we haven't answered your question.
Okay, rebuttal. Mary Alvarez?
The parental control issue. Okay, I have an issue that I'm working on right now. It's a Down Syndrome student who was attending Point Sienna. The mom came to me because she was very concerned that the child was not placed correctly. He was too advanced for his class. Yes, he's a Down Syndrome child, but they hadn't assessed his abilities. He was a highly functioning child, and the mom ended up having to take the child out of school and now is homeschooling him. That's why she came to me, because she feels like it's really hard for her to teach him herself. She needed the support of the administration principals, except no student education, to properly place that child. Over and over again, we hear these issues. And I don't know what is happening with the administration that they're not listening to these parents and meeting the needs of these exceptional student education students. I've got so many stories, not enough time here. I think that's read.
That's read, yes. Darlene?
So this is the reason for my run, because I feel like as a parent, I have no control. I don't get to pick exactly what my daughter has to take. She's subjected to Common Core. I don't get to pick the books that she has in the library. I don't get to pick any of those things. However, before I ran, I should have had a voice. I should have been able to say, "You know what? Let me know what the committees are that I can participate." I feel like most parents don't know where to begin. I think a lot of parents say, or they tell their girlfriend, they say, "Look, I don't believe in this. I can't believe this. I'm going to do this or this as a parent." But nobody exactly knows where to go to focus. My thought was, "I'm going to go down to the Collier County Supervisor Elections, and I'm going to put my name on the ballot, and I'm going to be able to hear my voice." That's what I felt. As far as the parental control, I don't think that parents are in control. I think that the school board is in control, and what voice is made is said. There are committees that I know that I've been a part of on one because I'm a member of the NAF board. There are things that we have said as a committee, said this should be in place, and they were rejected at the school board level. So no, I do not think that the parents or committees have that much control.
Mr. Terry?
Yes, we're talking about choice here, and I think that the opportunity for the parent as far as choice goes is we have all kinds of choices within the school district. And so where parents want to place their students. As Alvarez just mentioned, homeschooling. Or, I'm sorry, Mrs. Cash did. So there are a lot of things. Homeschooling, there's charter schools, there's private schools, and there's the public school system. I think that once they get into the public school system, then that's up to the superintendent and the people working in the school system to determine what they want to do educationally. Now, there are procedures in place for parents to be able to go and voice their concerns with the principal of the school, and that procedure is in place. I, after meeting, a few meetings ago, I went back to the superintendent and got a list of all the different communication opportunities that we have for parents, and there were 20 different parental opportunities for parents to become in communication with the school system. So I don't think that communication is a bad thing. We've received numerous awards for communication with the district.
Rebuttal of the other two. Want any of that?
All right, very good. This question goes to Ms. Cash. This is a curriculum question. Start there, and then we can have the other candidates weigh in on it. Given your background with the ESL and that demographic and the needs there, the data suggests that if a child is not on grade level by third grade, they are three to four times more likely to drop out of high school. In 2010, 71% of third graders scored three or higher in Collier County. And that was during the time of the Spalding Phonics program. In 2017, 57% of third graders, that's including charters and the newer, the non-charter, the new charter schools are emerging in the community, but 57% earned a three or higher in 2017. So we went from 71 in 2010 to 57% in 2017. The state average in 2017 was 58%. So many teachers and parents attribute the prior success that we enjoyed in the community to the millions of dollars that we invested in the Spalding Phonics program, which is replaced by the Pearson Reading Street program. Do you, what do you propose or what do you propose to the community that we can do to improve the third-grade reading school scores, particularly those students who have English as a second language?
I definitely believe in phonics. And this, I'm going to go to my household. I am a phonetic reader. You all know I'm a second-language learner. Okay, I can decode reading, certain readings, better than my husband. My husband's a sight reader. Okay, so I attribute most of my success in elementary school as an English language learner to my second-grade teacher, Ms. Graziano, who used to sit down with me 20 minutes every day, all by myself, because I was the only ESL student in the classroom. And she made sure that I got that phonetic background. She made sure that I knew my reading, decoding skills as far as the curriculum. We need, whether it's Spalding, whether it's eye-ready, we must have phonetics. The other thing we must have is penmanship. Our students cannot read cursive. Shame on us. Our students cannot read cursive. What are we doing?
There's definitely a correlation between reading something and then writing about it. I think that that helps the students a lot. As far as the curriculum goes, the curriculum is in the hands of the superintendent of schools and her staff. And I think we can talk with her about the idea of looking at the reading program if, in fact, that is the problem. But I think we need to look at the total situation and see what we need to do to improve it. Nobody here is saying that we're perfect at anything we do, Nobody here is saying that we're perfect at anything we do, but we can always look for doing it better. And that's what we try to do each year.
So to answer your question directly, if I had seen that the evidence was there that the Spalding was a better choice, then I would obviously go back and look at it and see what exactly was in it that made these numbers better and look at that accreditation. As far as the, what I believe is part of the issues with the testing is the kids are tested too much. I mean, I know there were some times that we go through things with just my kids and we have, they're so pent up and stressed because they know they have a test coming up. So my idea for that would be to not let kids know that we even have the testing coming up, because maybe we'll lose some of that stress and the kids could just take it and say, this is it, this is the test. We're going to sit down today, we're going to take it, like we used to say, we have a pop quiz. I do believe that there have been changes from when my sons went to school, who are now 18, 19, 20, and then for my daughter now. They do have a change in the curriculum where my, the students now are learning cursive, which I was glad to see. However, they don't have a huge focus on it. It is lost within, if they have time, they hit seventh grade. Thank you.
Before we go to another question, one clarification. Roy, you said the curriculum was in the hands of the superintendent. Does that mean that the school board does not approve curriculum and cannot give direction to changing curriculum?
The superintendent develops the curriculum along with her staff, the curriculum that we're going to use. The school board certainly, if they see a major problem with curriculum, can take that to the superintendent and have her address it or him address it. But the job of the superintendent is to develop the curriculum that they use.
So can the school board say, no, we don't want that curriculum, we want this alternate curriculum?
The school board would certainly take that concern to the superintendent. Of course, the school board has the ability to hire and fire the superintendent. That's one of the things that we do. And if we saw a major problem, that would be something that we would take to them and then let them address the situation.
Mary Ellen.
I'd like to speak to this. This is the point that many of you heard me make before, that a few years ago, I think as much as maybe five or six years ago, the incumbent had the deciding vote on giving operational control of the school system to Dr. Patton. In other words, in my view, as a citizen of Collier County, that evening as I was sitting in that boardroom, I looked at it as if that school board was saying, you know what? I get paid so much, whatever, and it's a part-time job. It would be easier for me to just give her the job and then I can criticize her and say that it's her responsibility. It isn't. It's the fiduciary responsibility of the school board by law to establish that policy for the curriculum. And again, I say to you that we are not doing our job. As a school board, we are not doing our job.
That's the problem. I think a lot of people that run for school board don't understand exactly how it works. And we do not have control over the curriculum per se. We have ways that we can get the curriculum looked at, and if we're not happy with that, then we can address that. That's not our job as a school board. It's the superintendent's job. That's why they are hired as the superintendent to run the school district. It's as simple as that.
Okay.
I'd like to respond to this again. Why did you have to vote on giving her the fiduciary responsibility then for operations if that's the case?
We voted on the attorney, I believe, in terms of whether to have one attorney or two attorneys. So that's a vote that I remember I was making when it was brought up that some of the board members wanted to have a separate attorney. We always have the ability to be able to hire a separate attorney to represent the school board or the superintendent. And that's the vote that we took in 2015.
I promise you, I'll look it up. And in the next forum, I will give you line and verse in the minutes from when that operational control was given to the superintendent. I promise.
How about a lightning round? Question, yes or no? Rather than do a whole lightning round, let's just pause for one yes or no response to this question. By law, does the school board have the constitutional responsibility for running the Collier County School? If yes, raise your hand.
Yes.
Please, just raise your hand. For all the candidates, does the Collier County School Board have the constitutional responsibility for running the school? Yes?
Yes, and no.
No, okay. Understand that there are other laws. Thank you, thank you. Lightning round, question number two. Does the school board work for the school superintendent?
No.
Yes, raise your hand. No, raise your hand.
No.
No. Does the school board work for the superintendent? Yes, raise your hand. Nobody said yes, so, no, now raise your hand.
No.
Sometimes people are unsure by the way school boards conduct themselves in Florida, who works for who? And so that was the reason for clarifying that, to find out who gives direction one way or another.
Can I answer something because I didn't get to go through all that?
All right.
Before. This is the reason why we shouldn't have given anybody the contract until 2020. So as far as an HR professional, I would never have done that. I would have gone through the performance review and have it be your base. If our teachers are on a year-to-year contract, I believe the superintendent should be one as well.
All right. How about a different question? In the last legislative session, both the House and the Senate passed and the governor signed a bill that is generally referred to as HB1 or the Bullying Bill. We'll start with Kathy Ryan and ask this question. What will you do as a school board member to make sure parents are aware of HB1?
All right, we have a website. Parents have access to it, those kinds of things, and procedures should be posted. There's no question about it. My feeling about HB1 is, I'm not quite sure they, it addresses the issue the way it should be. To me, the bully is the one who needs to be taken care of and stopped. Not ask the student who's being bullied to change schools. Now, again, I'm not saying that opportunity should not be afforded to a student if that's the parent's choice. But I think if there is excessive bullying going on in the schools, whether it's excessive or if there's one person, we need to stop the bullying, not be moving students around. And if anybody's going to be moved, if there's a really obnoxious bullier, maybe they need to be considered for the alternative program. But that's the person who needs to move, not the student who's bullied.
Just to clarify, HB1 does not require that the student that's bullying be moved. It puts the control of the student's future in the hands of the parents. So the school is perfectly within their opportunity to solve the problem by removing the bully. The question is, is how will you let parents know they have that opportunity to ensure their child's safety and well-being going forward?
Okay, those procedures should be in place and to, for parents to access their ability to make use of this law. We do have the website. Most parents that I talk to get their information through the website. They also probably, to make it even more, to get it out there, things should be sent home. But for the most part, most parents, particularly the young parents with younger students, get their information off the website. And that's where it needs to be published. There needs to be procedures in place to implement this law. And then the website seems to be the best place for all of that information to be made available.
Yes. So the start of every school year, this year will be the first year since HASBO 1 has been fully, will be fully implemented. And so I'm fully expecting on day one, my kids will come home with a CD with the student handbook. They used to print it up and the printing costs were astronomical. And so now they put it on disc for every family. Comes home at the start of the school year. So I'll be interested to see how that's addressed. I'm sure that it will be spelled out in there in terms of procedure, but I will verify that on day one when it comes home. I do agree with Dr. Ryan. It seems the website is the easiest way for parents to get information. And in terms of HASBO 1, one of the things I've said at several forums that's come up, we have got to create more seats at these alternative placement programs. Because bullying is an issue. It absolutely is an issue. And parents need to feel like they have recourse, that their children can go to school and be safe. And so if we have kids that are coming to school and they're upsetting the program, and this is, we're talking about bullying, harassment over a period of time, true bullying, then those kids need to be the ones to be inconvenienced, and those parents need to be inconvenienced and make the drive to Phoenix or New Beginnings. So that our kids who are willing to sit and are at school to learn can be safe doing so.
Okay. Additional comment, Kathy? We'll go to the next table. I don't remember who we started with last time, but we'll go with Mary Ellen. Same question, let me restate the question.
Yeah, I want to respond to this.
Let me restate the question, please. As a school board member, what will you do to make sure parents are aware of HB1?
Okay, so HB1 is a change in the law. So what would they do in the schools? They've always done it, is send home communication in Spanish, English, and Creole in writing. And the elementary school, students get a little folder that goes home every week. So that would be printed up and put in each student's folder. The parents are supposed to read the folder every week and then they're supposed to sign. Yes, they read all the communication and it's done in the three languages. Now, where we have an issue is, CGA Elementary, for example, has over 80 different languages that are represented in the ESL program. They have 92 students, and I happen to know a little bit more about CGA because my cousin is the ESL resource teacher, Maria Cabrera, the Hispanic Teacher of the Year in 2008. And so some of you here have volunteered at CGA, so you know about this. So if those people don't speak English, you need to let the child know, so-and-so will be here to ask mom and dad's questions or mom and dad's question, but we need to talk to mom and dad. And my cousin does that a lot. That's why she's so valued in that school. She figures out a way to get the communication, whether it's Norwegian, Russian, Chinese, Japanese, she has it all. And she finds who can help her with that, and that's her job. That's why she got to attribute.
Go to Mr. Terry.
Yeah, HB1 is a bill for bullying. I do credit for addressing bullying, but I don't think they did it through the right way. I think that HB1 is basically, as Ms. Ryan said, it's the wrong student having to leave the school. The person that should be approached on that is the bully. Other students have a right to be in that school and not be bullied. And it's very important that we don't allow bullying in our schools. We notify the parents at the beginning, and I'm not going to go back through Ms. Cash's explanation, but they are notified through their folder in the elementary and things are sent home in the middle in the high school. But I think that the other thing is, is that I firmly believe that if the legislature wants to support charter schools and private schools, that they need to set up a fund to do that. But let's not try to use bullying as the excuse to set up vouchers for other schools.
Let's not mischaracterize the law. The law does not prevent the school from removing the bully. The bully can't be removed as a solution. What it does is it allows the parents the opportunity to say whether that solution is satisfactory.
That's very true, and that's what we do. We don't need HB1 to do that. That happens all the time in our schools right now. So we don't need HB1 to do that. HB1, as I said before, is just a way to put money aside to use for vouchers for private and charter schools. That's what it is, and that's not mischaracterizing it.
All right, so as I'm on before, I've had my fair share of situations in the school. And sometimes a bully, a student that is bullied is too afraid to come forward and the parents say, you know what, I'm at wits end. I'm glad I have, let's just say, a bullying voucher to move. There's other vouchers as well for students that feel as though they're not getting the right needs that they have for ADD and other such disorders. Students have the McKay Scholarship. There's several ways that students can take those scholarships and say, you know what, I'm fed up and I can move. But those scholarships, I mean, those vouchers were set in place because obviously correct policies and procedures haven't been in place, and parents felt like they needed another method so that they can move forward and take their kids out and have that choice, if you want to break it down to. This is why I believe in, that's why I bring the business common sense to the school board, because what would happen if we were in the workplace and we bullied somebody? Termination, right? We need to have policies and procedures in place so that students and teachers know and admit of school behavior, the correct measures needed to take force of action for all of these. It has to make name, it has to be consistent among every school, for all students, and have everything in place.
Pushback from the other, Mary Ellen.
So the question was, how do we inform the parents? I just want to remind you what the question was. So that's what we said. But since everybody said something about bullying, I want to talk about school climate. We used to train teachers and principals and even talk to parents about school climate. We need to start this conversation again. It was a safe, positive environment where everyone knew the standards. Any administrator that came to this district in the 80s will tell you that, 80s and 90s. It was SOP every year that we went through immense training on how to establish positive school climate. We have to get back to that. That's what controls bullying. And then the school, everyone, from principal to the janitors, respect each other, honor each other, and are part of a school community. That's what we have to get back to.
We're going to have a follow-up question on the bullying question. There's been a movement away from general anti-bullying curriculum and a attempt to use the bullying or tolerance policies of the district to interject curriculums such as the LGBQT curriculum. If elected, would you approve that curriculum in order to ensure that that community, that those members of that community were specifically identified and protected through the curriculum? Or do you view, is it your view that the general anti-bullying curriculum is sufficient? So if elected, would you, would you approve a specific LGBQT curriculum? I'd like to see rapid fire, yes or no? Mr. Terry.
I'd have to, I'd have to look at the curriculum. I can't just make a general statement.
But the concept of a specific curriculum targeted to that group, would you be supportive of that?
Well, maybe supportive of that in conjunction with other curriculum, like a health curriculum or something like that.
So that would be a yes.
But I'm not, no, I'm not voting for strictly a one-size-fits-all curriculum.
Right, you, I think your answer, just so I can understand, your answer was you would need to review the curriculum?
That's correct. I need to look at, I need to see what it is.
Are you opposed to the concept of a curriculum for that, for that student population?
I would not have a total curriculum just for any population.
A part of the curriculum?
I would, we service all the students in Collier County. We don't just service one group or another.
And Mr. Terry?
If it was part of another curriculum in the health curriculum, which it probably is right now, I would, I would support that.
Okay. Is there a line that you would draw in terms of elementary, middle school, or high school? Would you, would you be supportive in any, any of the schools?
Once again, I'd have to look at the curriculum.
Okay.
I'd like to answer this. Our kids can't read, write, and do arithmetic. Our property, excuse me, our business owners, small business owners in the community have stated that 47% of the applicants that come to them today are untrainable. That was on the Naples Daily News. That was not anything that we made up as a community. 47% are untrainable. Why are they untrainable? They can't read, they can't write, and they can't do math, basic math. So that has to be our focus. All other curriculums have to take a backseat to that. Until we get them all so that they can get a job and can do something with their lives, everything else is secondary. So quite honestly, that's where our focus needs to be.
I think it goes back to, everybody should be created equally. We shouldn't segregate students to say that, okay, this is where you are, this is where I am, okay? Not everybody is a minority. I think everybody should be a priority. I don't, I would have to look at that curriculum. And I do that now. I mean, I'm a professor of business management at Kaiser University. And before, I even teach my students what I know. teach my students what I know, I still have to look at every single curriculum. I'm not going to say yes exactly to that question.
So you would lean towards more of a general anti-bullying curriculum or targeted to that group?
A general for everyone. Look, in the workforce, we all have the equal opportunity of employment. Everybody has the right to go to work. Everybody should have the right to go to school, and nobody should feel segregated in that position.
I think we've lost track of the question. Were you looking, were you asking about?
If elected, would you approve a specific LGBQT curriculum? Or would you prefer a general anti-bully curriculum?
You're just saying it's part of the bullying curriculum.
Correct. Curriculum.
I didn't bullying. I don't think we, we don't have like a bullying curriculum, so I'm not sure where that's coming from. In terms of, particularly in elementary school, where just behavior and general behaviors are part of the general overall curriculum, again, you want to be anti-bullying of anybody for anything. You know, we don't want kids bullied because they wear glasses, or because they're too short, or too fat, or too tall, or too thin, or they have crooked teeth. We're against bullying. I don't think, I don't see the need for a specific bullying curriculum regarding that particular community, because I believe all kids, that's one aspect of why kids get bullied. But bullying in general should just, and you do it in elementary school, and if you approach it correctly, it covers everything.
I agree with what she just said in terms of bullying being a broad topic, and that we shouldn't accept unkindness to each other, to our students, on any level, for any reason, regardless of gender identity or any other reason per se. I think there really are two questions in there. LGBTQ issues are addressed in the health curriculum at age-appropriate levels. So yes, those are addressed in health classes for the older students. But in terms of bullying curriculum, next year, our district is going to focus on social emotional learning in order to really focus our kids in on how to be kind to one another, regardless of social status, and as I said, gender identity, and those types of issues. It's called social emotional learning. It is going to be a focus of the district going forward. In response to Parkland, they realized that in order to address school safety, it has to be comprehensive. It has to include the mental health of our students in addition to hardening of sites and those types of things. So I think we actually are going to have a true anti-bullying curriculum, if you will, going forward, starting this school year with their social emotional learning curriculum.
All right, we're coming to the end of our time, so let's wrap this up with a couple of lightning round type questions, and then we'll move on to the closing parts of the event tonight. So here's the question. Do you support the new law requiring the display of the Florida motto in public school buildings? If yes, raise your hand. Do you support the new law requiring the display of the Florida motto in public school buildings? If yes, raise your hand. If no, raise your hand. Should the Collier County Public Schools withdraw from the litigation against what was known as HB 7069? Yes, raise your hand. No, raise your hand. And the reason we do lightning round, I know some of you are uncomfortable with that. I appreciate that. But when you're a school board member, you have to vote yes or no. There are opportunities to vote in between, and I know you could explain yourself, but that's what we need to understand.
Let me just say that we are not in 7069. We're just an intervenor in one section of it, and that's the Schools of Hope. We are not, we did not join the whole lawsuit.
Okay, thank you.
And can I say that my wavering was based on the fact that the situation has changed in that we no longer have a dog in the fight. We have all AVNC schools here in Collier County. We don't have a DRE school anymore. So maybe we don't need to spend the money.
So you're a yes.
I think maybe I am.
Oh, we have budgeted $100,000 for legal fees.
No, that's not true. It's $55,000.
That was the first amount, and then you supplemented that in the last school board meeting?
No, we had only spent $25,000, and we agreed to expand that to $55,000.
All right, one final lightning round question. You've probably heard this question many times. Will you voluntarily impose term limits on yourself? If yes, raise your hand. If no, raise your hand. So, yes?
I like the idea of free terms because of district.
I didn't specify how many.
Right. Well, I understand.
All right, want to clarify that a little bit more? Let's change the question to this. Do you support Amendment 8? If yes, raise your hand. If no, raise your hand. Okay, because Amendment 8 does deal with specifics of term limits. All right, I think we're ready for closing remarks, and so we'll start at the, before the closing remarks are up.
I'll make this quick. The students' usher has just passed out straw poll. I want to emphasize a couple of points on this. You don't see anybody from District 1. Jory Westbury is running on the post, so there's no decision for you to make there. So what you have, you can vote for a candidate in each of the two districts that are here. And we really ask you to write in the top two issues for you. What we'll do, we'll be putting out a press release tomorrow, and I think that's equally important for all of the voters that aren't able to be here to understand what you all think are the top two issues. We'll end up tallying that up, and we'll actually publish the top four. This is being videotaped, so we'll be making that available in a couple of days for you to send. How many in here know when absentee ballots go out? Okay, so listen up. 52,000 absentee ballots are being sent out on July 24th. 52,000. Many of you will receive them the next day. Okay, Florida Citizens Alliance, and some of you know we work closely with the Christian Family Coalition, we're going to be putting out a voter guide, and we'll be making it available through the churches and online into our support groups. If you want to get that voter guide, please give us your email address. We can get it to you. We'll post it on our website, but we can't get it. Make sure you get it otherwise. So when you're done with these, after the closing, then make sure you give them to one of the students. They will tally them, okay?
All right, closing statements. And thank you again, candidates, for coming. Boy, will we begin at your end since we began at the other end from last time.
Okay, I want to thank everybody for coming this evening. I think these forums are very important, as it shows things that we believe, and you can make your decision as to who you want to support. But all of you are important to be here this evening so that we have many, many different views available. But I would like to stress that since being here since 1978, I know where we've been. I know where we are now, and I know where we need to grow. One reason I ran is that there's going to be a huge experience gap on the board. When you think about it, right now, there will only be four years total experience when you count the two years that Mr. Carter's been on and Ms. Lucarelli's been on. And I think it's important that our history is known and that there's experience working with the board. I think that's very, very important, and that's why I ran. I am the only candidate with that experience running for school board right now. And so I'm asking you for your vote on August 28th. I think it's very important that everybody get out and vote for whichever candidate you feel comfortable with, and I would certainly appreciate your vote on the 28th.
I just want you to focus on the real issue here. We're failing our students. Your taxes are being increased every year. According to the tax table that's in the website, last year, your taxes were increased by 7.48%, despite the fact that we keep hearing that they lowered the mileage rate. Remember, the planning commission tells you that your property values go up 8.46% every year. If you apply the mileage rate to the school board budget on that, that means that they're going to get more money every year. That's why I don't understand why they keep raising the mileage rate and talking about tax increases. The issue is not how much money we have. The issue is how we're managing that money, how we're dealing with curriculum, how we're supporting our teachers, how we're planning. It's a very basic situation. We just need to stop following the status quo, do more assessment, more evaluation, more focus, more planning. It's basic business principles. The school system is a business, a billion-dollar business. I hope you'll vote Marielle and Cash on August 28th, and make sure that your tax dollars are being properly used.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. My professional background makes me uniquely qualified to be a positive addition to the Collier County School Board. I'm working on my PhD in business management and marketing. I understand as a mom where we're coming from and where I'd like to see the future of the Collier County children. This should not be an expense for students with our budget. This should be an investment in our students' future. I see a new vision. I see a new direction. I see a fresh approach with what I bring. I'm the only candidate running that has business common sense. I'm an HR certified professional. All students need to be afforded the same level of excellence when it comes to their education. My focus is very clear, to create an environment where every student has the opportunity to succeed. Simple. It requires Collier County schools to create a career-minded curriculum, to focus on workforce-ready electives, a strong business outreach program for Collier County businesses, focus on what is expected for our growing economy, not another county. So my goal as a school board member is to promote collaboration with teachers, parents, students, administrators, and definitely Collier County businesses. I want a time for change and a positive environment. My name is Darlene Alvarez. Please vote for me August 28th, and at this one, too. I'll take the straw poll as well. Thank you.
Again, thank you to the committee and for all of you coming out tonight and sitting through this. I hope it was informative. I bring you my experience and knowledge and my preparation so that I believe I can be an effective member of the school boards on day one. As was pointed out, when you get some new people, it maybe takes as much as a year before they really understand the issues and what's going on. I've been attending board meetings for a long time. There's a number of you in the audience who have seen me there. We've been there, sometimes as friends, sometimes as foes. But you know that I have the knowledge of what's going on, and I'm prepared to start on day one. I offer that to you. Again, if you do not have a copy of my information, it's available on the back table, and I'll be around to talk with you after. I'm Dr. Kathy Ryan. I would like your vote on August 28th. And the most important thing, because it is a primary where nobody usually votes, please be sure and get out to vote, and bring all of your friends and neighbors, and we need to have the best voting we've had ever in Collier County.
Thank you all again for coming out this evening. It would be my absolute honor to serve you on the Collier County School Board. I hope I can count on your vote on August 28th. I promise I will work hard to be informed about all of the decisions that come before us as a board, do my homework, and continue to work to focus on increasing parent achievement, excuse me, student achievement, parent involvement, attracting and retaining great teachers, continued fiscal management of your taxpayer dollars, and so on. Thank you again for coming out this evening, and if you have any questions for me afterwards, I'll be hanging around. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to have you thank all of the candidates. The energy it takes to run, the energy and effort and dedication it takes to run and then follow through if you're elected is huge, and so we really appreciate it. I was remiss at the beginning, the supervisor of elections, Carol Diaz, in the back, so if you're not sure whether you registered or you want to change that registration for whatever reason, she can help you in the back. Again, we want to thank you for coming out. Our role, we're a nonpartisan group, we're a 501(c)(3), so we do not endorse candidates. But we think it's our mission to help you, the voter, be as educated on the various issues and the candidates' values as possible. So that's our singular motivation. If you haven't filled out your voter, your straw poll yet, please do and get it to our two interns in the back. I'm going to close, we are videotaping this, as I said. I want to close with a request. These events cost us anywhere from 400 to 600 bucks apiece to put on, and we would appreciate a donation of 10, 15, 20 bucks on your way out if you're willing. It's not necessary, not a requirement, but it would certainly be appreciated and help us continue to help you get educated. So thank you again for coming tonight. The candidate said they'll be here for a while if you have more questions, and so have a great evening, and you're going to get your early voting if you register for that on the 24th or 25th. Thank you. Have a good night.